Whitcomb STEM Week presentation.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite up Brian Daniels and Kathy Rickoff. They're going to show us a short video that has been done for STEM Week. I think it's a fantastic video, very professionally done. They just have some brief comments afterwards. So, Brian and Kathy, take it away.
We're very happy to be here tonight to present the ITU Learning STEM video. It will feature Whitcomb Middle School, and Whitcomb Middle School only. We are the national video for ITU Learning and STEM Week and their promotion around the country. So, let's take a look, and then we can take questions. STEM Week has allowed us to find a way to focus middle school students on the future in a much more effective way than anything we've ever tried before. This is hands-on, where they walk out of a room going, "I could do this."
When we had the kids dive into the activity, they just went for it. They didn't want to stop. They just kept going the whole afternoon, and they wanted more time. They were really engaged with each other and with the materials, trying to come to something that they wanted to display.
STEM Week is about being creative and learning more about yourself.
It's great seeing the students engaged. For a teacher, it makes our job easier when they're engaged, they're asking questions, they're having fun. It's a win-win.
Can you get it to break up like the Big Bang and separate out? Oh, my God! Okay, stop!
Not that there's less work, it's just that the work is more fun, and it's more hands-on stuff, and I personally love hands-on stuff like that.
The hands-on activity is huge, because it's not until they get their hands dirty with something that they really start understanding what the questions are.
This program has allowed many of my teachers to step outside of their silo. Good teachers can teach anything with proper support and training.
I think a lot of teachers, especially teachers from outside science and engineering, they were a little skeptical at first. They were apprehensive, anxious about stepping out of their comfort zone.
Is it possible to adjust the height on the wall?
This week, it's really been a great transformation, that we've seen a lot of teachers really engaged, they're in it, and they're doing a great job.
Being a non-science teacher, coming from a phys ed background, if you're being asked to do this, don't be afraid to do it. I think that kind of helps to show a lot of the students about the staff and the teachers that they're working with, when they're willing to go outside that comfort zone with them. And be willing also in front of the students to say, "I don't necessarily know that answer. Let's find it together."
Failure is okay. It's important to fail in order to have your learning progress and to do a better job at anything.
As I walked through classrooms in these first three days, I would hear, "I can't, maybe I can, hey, I did," over and over and over.
All right, ready? Three, two, one.
Students have so much potential that we really haven't even tapped into, and one of the things we wanted to do this week was to help kids to recognize that. Every classroom that I walked into, the kids were focused, they were engaged, they were having great conversations, they were talking to one another about the content, and kind of deliberating and making decisions together. They were really proud of what they did.
I never knew I could make a water filter, and it turns out I can drink, I can make drinkable water.
If a teacher is considering having a STEM Week, I would just say, jump right in, because it is going to be a life-changing experience for our students and our teachers here.
The kids learned so much, the teachers learned so much, the collaboration was a blast.
One thing I would remember for the rest of my life about STEM Week was how learning can be fun.
It's a blast. I recommend it to anyone else.
Best thing about this week for me is that I know as an educator, I have planted seeds that will not come to fruition for five, 10, or 15 years, but I know there's something growing, and I can go home every night knowing that we did the very best we could for kids this week. And we absolutely did the very best we could that week for our kids. Just about a year ago, this time of year, Kathy wanders into my office and says, "Come across this group, ITU Learning, and they promised," and she had a list this long of all the things they promised, and I looked at her and said, "That can't possibly be true." And she said, "No, I agree with you, it can't possibly be true." And it absolutely was. ITU Learning came through on every single thing that they promised and beyond. Working with Kathy and with a faculty that was willing to let us remake school, we made a new school for a week. Was exciting and challenging, and as so many of our teachers said on the way out every afternoon, "I'm exhausted." Yeah, it was also exhausting. And the whole Whitcomb crew gets huge credit, but to work with someone who would bring the idea in first, that had to happen for it to come to fruition. So, we are in great debt to Kathy for all of her work, but especially for that moment.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, I would just like to add that it really was a great experience for me. The teachers at Whitcomb School were, they trusted that we were going to come through, and we tried to keep them involved in every step of the way, to take in their ideas and to listen to them, and we understood that it was, it was very stressful for them to think about letting go of everything that they know how to do the way they do it, and to just trust that this was going to be a good experience for kids. And so, they trusted us, and I think, I think at the end, they, they were exhausted, but they all thought, "Wow, this was, this was great." The kids, the kids just were transformed. I mean, it was terrific. So now, our goal is to take this model and to bring it back again to Whitcomb School, whether it's going to look exactly the same or be a little bit different, we're going to be talking about that. And if we can expand our STEM Week model, or that immersion model, in other parts, elementary and high school, you know, that would even be better. So, this is just the beginning. Thank you.
The week is inspiring. The week that the WPI group that Kathy is working with, is as they look at and think about the entire district, we have had the opportunity already to speak to three, four other districts that basically called up and said, "This can't all be true." I laughed with a Lowell curriculum director to say, "You know, a year ago, I asked the exact same question." But to be part of spreading what we think is a very important and positive opportunity for kids in Marlboro, but everywhere, and to be on the cutting edge of that is very rewarding. So, my, my thanks again to the entire faculty and to everyone who made this possible, and yes, we are signed up for next year. So, we're on. Any questions?
Questions from the committee. Mr. Bolhendra.
Thank you. So, I don't know how you actually measured this, but anecdotally, are you hearing from teachers that, are you seeing, you know, you say it's transformative. Are you seeing kids that perhaps were a little less engaged prior to this, being more engaged in some of their class, you know, what, are you seeing lasting effects?
I think that, you know, the collaboration that was encouraged and required during STEM Week was something that they can see. Happening so early in the year really helped to break the ice a lot for some students, and so, with those relationships formed in the classroom, they've been able to continue having more productive discussions and problem-solving. So, that's one of the things.
Great.
Yep. And, you know, we did hear a lot of kids who expressed interest in careers, and they, especially in eighth grade with all the surgical techniques that they did, we heard, "Oh, you know, I want to be a vet, and this is just making me so much more excited to do that." So, there were, there were indications that this was going to help firm up or inspire ideas for future.
I think it's had a lasting impact on the faculty. Some of the much deeper projects that I'm seeing at grade levels this year are often referenced back to STEM Week. Well, we did, we could use those materials, that kind of thing. We also had, the entire faculty had a common experience, which, you know, in schools, the bell rings, you close your door, and you're kind of a one-off entrepreneur for 58 minutes. But this was an all-school event that showed us that we can do this together. Matt Pellequin, our PE teacher's comments in the video really summed that up, that he went somewhere he never would imagine having going. Today, he is, one of his assigned blocks is to assist in a Makerspace class. He absolutely loves it. In fact, arm wrestled Jack Pellequin to keep it when Jack suggested they should swap. No way, man.
And our attendance was fantastic during that week.
Oh, interesting. Staff and students.
It was unbelievable. We saw significant gains over that week, students coming into school. So, that's a great thing.
Yep, and drops in behavior problems as well.
Yeah, and having that common experience when we're trying to achieve this STEAM, you know, experience building-wide must really help in that.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, teachers, several teachers commented to me how great it was to be able to actually have a partner in the room that they don't normally have in the classroom. So, we may have had, you know, people from different parts of the building that were paired up for this week, and working with someone else and getting to know them, you know, when you're, when you're in the trenches with someone, you're trying to get through a day and have enough energy for the next day, when you share that kind of experience, you do form a special bond. And, and so, that was something that, that was noted by several teachers. We saw an awful lot of leaders emerge, too.
Yes.
There were leaders at every single grade level who really took charge when there was a need to embellish the curriculum, or to firm it up, or to provide some additional resources. There were people at every single grade level who stepped up to those tasks, and people who stepped up to deliver things, and to stay Friday afternoon, Ms. Patel over here, and deliver things, you know, when the boxes were piled as, as high as the ceiling. So, people really did give it their all, and I just was so grateful, because without, without everybody pulling together and doing something and being a team, it wouldn't have been as successful as it was.
Thanks.
Mrs. Tennessee.
Thank you. Just curious, because I know when I was there, I was able to see some of the high schoolers that had come down to be a part of, you know, kind of peer-to-peer, if you will, or a little bit of mentoring. Are you thinking that that will continue and/or look to expand, because especially with some of the pathways that you're looking for, expanding at the high school, I'm just curious, because often, you can encourage children to make some choices when they see someone older than themselves that have gone through an experience. So, I'm just curious what you heard about that and what your thoughts are about down the road.
I think the kids who joined from the high school, let me just explain a little bit. We wanted the teachers at the middle school to be 100% as comfortable as possible in delivering this curriculum. And so, we tried to see if we could provide additional bodies in the classroom to, to be there to partner with them. Because we, we didn't really know how to do that for everybody, I, I thought maybe it would be helpful to invite some high school students to have a field trip. So, I asked Mr. Riley if he would approve a field trip for students, and so, we, we went to the, I was mostly concerned about eighth grade, because they're going to be dissecting several things, and so, I, I went to the anatomy and physiology and AP Biology teacher, and we decided that we would put together a field trip that would focus on maybe kids from those areas, and that we would support mostly the eighth grade. It was so well-accepted as an idea that we decided to open it up to many other classes, and so, we had about 85 high school students who came over three days, and Ms. Fessenden at the high school coordinated it through the National Honor Society. She kind of started with that as a group, and then it went beyond. It wasn't simply National Honor Society students, but we had teachers every day who walked with the students to the Whitcomb School, so they were chaperones for the day, and walked them back, and we were lucky enough to get some sponsors to, to provide a pizza lunch for everybody. So, it was a great experience for the kids. I heard many positive comments from the teachers at the high school that the kids had enjoyed it so much. So, I do think that that would be something we'd want to continue, and I know the, the middle school teachers appreciated it and thought that they did a great job as well. Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start the report by letting you know that I did place at everyone's seat the Assabett Valley Collaborative Update. So, once a quarter, I provide an update from AVC, as you guys elected me to the board, and this is the update that I'm giving for the second quarter. It's actually a really nice annual report that they do, and I, I think they really do a great job producing this and talking about all the programs that they provide. So, we can count this as our second quarter report. Just want to thank Kathy Cummins and all of her staff for producing this and giving us enough copies so we can distribute it to everyone else. One thing I'd like to give notice on is that Dan Riley and I have been discussing an opportunity to partner with Big Brothers Big Sisters in the MAZI Partnership Program. The MAZI Partnership Program offers adult support for youth at risk in the community in the high school level. It starts in the 10th grade. I gave a brief overview and also a link to their website. I would encourage everyone to take a look at the website and see what they do. This program has been in place at Framingham High and Waltham High for many years. It has incredible success rates, and it really could be something that we think could be transformative for some of the kids in our community, to be able to get a community partner to be, you know, kind of an adult in their life who they can rely on and establish a relationship with through their high school years, to help them through some of the things that they may not have support from home. So, we think it's a wonderful program, we'd like to see it. We're, we're looking at this partnership to determine what the, how it would work and what we would need to do. The district would need to put up $15,000 next year as part of the partnership, because they do have a social worker who works with the kids at the high school level to support this relationship and also define the mentors. The rest of it would be something that we would raise through fundraising. So, at this point, it's not signed, sealed, and delivered, but I wanted to give you an update that we are continuing to look at this, and I really think this is a wonderful opportunity for businesses in Marlboro, to be able to, to give to the schools in a, in a really great way, whether it be money for the program, or whether it be time, whether they want to be a mentor and mentor some of our kids who could certainly use it. So, it's just a quick update. I encourage you to look at their website, it's really fantastic. The district review, I have an update from the update. So, we did submit our drafts and our edits back to DESI. Our last meeting was canceled, so right now, the draft is now final. So, I've asked Patty to create a copy of each of it for each of you, so that way, we can get them out to you. I looked today around 5:00, and it still wasn't posted to the DESI website, so I don't know why they haven't posted it yet. They're supposed to post it on the website, but I'll make a paper copy available until they do, and we'll send it out. Again, I want to thank everyone across the whole district, staff, everybody participated to work with DESI as they came out on those three days in October, and provide them a lot of information, and now, we're taking that information they gave us, and we're going through it in a measured way to try to see, how can we use this to improve our Thanks to Mr. Diaz for putting together the FY20 budget document. You know, we look forward to the workshop tomorrow. Please don't hesitate to send us any questions. I know time is running short, but should there be any questions that you'd like us to address before the meeting, feel free to send them, even if it's tonight. Doug and I will take a look and try to get as much as we can done. But again, thanks, thanks Doug, you've done a great job with it, and I'm really pleased with where we are right now. Our, our budget request is 2.88% above last year's number, which was exactly where we were last year. Not on purpose, it just kind of happened that way, but we're very pleased about where we are, we think we're in a good place with the, the additions that we've talked about over the past couple of years, whether it be additional translators and support for our IT department. I just want to give a, a quick review to the, the committee that I put in to this document also, just a quick kind of formative assessment for myself, tracking where I am with my goals and to give you an update of where I am, so that way, if you have any questions, you can let me know, and if there's anything you'd like to talk further about, I'm happy to talk about. But I want to give you just a quick idea of where I am with all of my goals that I started for the beginning of the year. I think our workshop that we had was fantastic, I'd like to request another one. I think there's a lot of work we can do, and especially around developing goals and continuing to strengthen the, the relationship between all of us, and especially with this very busy year that's going to be on our docket for next year, with a lot of different things that we have to accomplish. I'd like to recognize, actually, Brian, you're here in the audience, I'd like to recognize the great work of our students, and I, if you didn't see the WHGH story, I put the web link in there, but also, just go on Facebook, and you can just click on it, because that's easier than trying to do it through this document. But wow, just fantastic. Thank you. Kudos, Brian, it's a, it was a fantastic story. So, thank you, and thank you to the students, just great, all around. So, I just wanted to recognize that. So, I'm not sure if there's any questions on my report tonight.
Any questions from the committee? Mrs. Tennessee.
My only comment to extend that is, I have to say, I, I love all of the involvement that Brian and your whole group does on, on having a lot of the students throughout the schools get involved and really interact with all of the kids, and I think it really helps them when we're talking about life skills altogether, it really gives kids a lot more empathy, I think, all over, on learning how to collaborate with people that are not necessarily always the same as each other. This was an exact example, where these students all worked through something, you know, ice hockey and ice skating, that kind of brought them together, but learning also life skills about some of the cleaning things, you know, going on around the rink and such. But you do that often with everyday practices, and I can only say, with my own child coming home, explaining when the, you know, the electricity went out with the wind yesterday, and they had to kind of all figure out about what to do, when students were used to using their iPads on Wi-Fi, and obviously, the Wi-Fi was not going to be available at that moment, and they had to figure out what next, and everybody kind of worked together. But I, I think that that's part of great skills that we're giving, and I really appreciate your group and all that they do on trying to make sure that our students overall learn those skills in regular settings that we're going to have throughout life. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, a great program, thank you very much for doing that. Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
Thank you. In December of 2017, we asked students in grades three through 12 and all staff to complete online WE surveys. Additionally, the International Center for Leadership and Education, also known as ICLEE, consultant Jim Miles completed an instructional review focused on rigor and relevance. This was important baseline data for our schools and district. Each school reviewed the data, set goals in their school improvement plans based on the results of the surveys and review, and identified professional development in August, this past August, to support the needs of their buildings. In the last few weeks, students in grades three through 12 and all instructional staff once again completed the WE surveys. Jim Miles from ICLEE also returned and completed an updated instructional review, February 5th through the 8th. During this review, he observed classes using the rigor and relevance framework once again. This observation feedback, coupled with the WE touch, teach, and WE learn surveys, will allow us to measure growth as we work to improve outcomes for our students. I also attached to my, the report, the January 22 catalog of professional development offerings for all MEA members. During this day, par educators and behavior technicians were assigned to trainings on positive behavior interventions, dealing with students with behavioral issues, and developing growth mindset. Additionally, all building administrators and office support attended focused trainings. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? Any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Mayor, it's a quick update from Finance and Operations. Mike and I both had budget on the, on our updates tonight, so I think we're both excited. But just a quick reminder, tomorrow, 6:00 PM, the budget book documents are available in PDF format on our website, for anybody who's curious. We're looking forward to answering any questions you might have tomorrow night. Cafeteria balances have jumped up about $800 since the last time I gave you an update. We're now at negative $4,000 compared to negative $2,600 at the same time last year. Now, I'm drilling down on this number, trying to figure out why it's jumping up so much at this time, working closely with principals and food services, just to make sure we're contacting everybody, and then jumping up our collection efforts. So, I'll be watching this even more closely over the next few weeks. On the same note, I just wanted to update the committee that this fiscal year, we're going out to bid for a food services management company contract. We currently have a five-year contract with RMAC, this ending on June 30th, and the goal is to again, secure another long-term contract with a partner, who we can continue having a successful, profitable nutritional, food services program with. That's one of our larger operational contracts that we go out to bid for, that's happening this, this spring. And also, in contracts, the city of Marlboro recently, has recently received bids for the before and after-school childcare enrichment programs. The vendor selection process involves a analysis of the financial package, as well as the programming offerings, and there'll be a recommendation that's brought forward to us, and once we have that, we'll be bringing that to the committee.
Questions from the committee? Mr. Bergeron.
Not in the committee, but I would just like to ask if there's any members who would like to serve on the RFP committee for the food service contract.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Any of us, yeah.
All right. There you go.
I'll reach out. Yeah. Thank you.
Good, thank you for doing that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Minutes of January 22, 2019.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose, carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation, seeing none. Resolution supporting the PROMISE Act.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just start, I just wanted to let you know that after speaking with our partners in the MEA, that I did put this on the agenda tonight. It's well-known right now that in the state, there's a lot of discussions around education funding right now. The governor's budget has come out, we've started to review that information, but additionally, there, there are other legislators who are putting other things forward for, for people to consider and for the public to, to have their weight as well. So, this is something that I'm going to ask Rupel to speak to, because the, the MEA is asking for the school committee to support the resolution. I just wanted to give a brief background. Part of the reason that this is coming forward is that the Foundation Budget Review Committee had been charged to look at what are the issues with our current Chapter 70 funding formula. Chapter 70 is the largest form of aid that the state gives to local municipalities for their, for their education funding. So, they, we've had their findings for four years now, and there is now starting to be a groundswell of information coming up about whether or not there is going to be any changes to the formula. So, I just wanted to give a brief overview. Sorry, Rupel, I just stepped on your time.
I, I actually want to thank the superintendent for putting this on the agenda, and you for listening to our request for supporting the resolution to modernize the funding formula. You know, figures out there say that Marlboro stands to gain $8.7 million over the next three years, and the, the PROMISE Act would really address the issues that are relevant today. So, I'm just asking that the school committee pass a resolution to support the PROMISE Act. There are over 50 districts, I don't know if there are any more, are there any more? 55 districts and school committees that have already passed a resolution to support the recalculation of the funding formula for state funding for public education, so I leave it to you to...
Questions from the committee? Any questions? I, I'd just like to say, first of all, I think this is a great effort. There's no question the formula needs to be amended. I think it should be wholesale, though, and thrown out completely and started over, which includes funding for our vocationals, our regional schools and vocational schools and our charter schools altogether. I happen to have, hear a presentation from the senator this morning, and actually I'm going to another presentation she's doing tomorrow morning. And today, after she went through her presentation, I didn't think I was going to completely catch her off guard, but I said, "Where does the funding come from?" And it was one of those, we'll kind of deal with it when we get to it. And I think we've seen that with the lottery money, where promises were made and they haven't been able to come through with it. The governor's proposed his formula changes. The senator's proposed her funding changes. And there's a House version that's floating around, they're going to have their own funding changes for this. Again, I completely agree that it needs to be done. I don't know if this is the route to take. Over half the discussions we have today when it comes to school funding involves the charter school. And the charter schools make up this much of school funding. And the legislature can't figure out how to fix that one little thing because it's a great political football to kick around down there and they have no interest in fixing it. So how can we trust the process to fix all our funding? So I won't be supporting the resolution, but I do support the fact that we need to find a new formula. You know, we didn't make out great in the governor's proposal coming in next year. But I just think we need to start really from a blank slate and work it up and all work together on it. And dedicate some type of funding sources to where it's going to come from to figure out how to pay for it, so...
I think, you know, it's a grassroots level. A few years ago, there was question two on the ballot, which started as a grassroots. And I know that that wasn't something that you agreed with entirely, but, you know, I think if it's pushed to the forefront and people will be made to find the money or find the funding sources, that if it's let, to be left on the back burner as it has been, then there's no rush, you know? And that charter school football will be kicked around a little bit more. But I think the students of Marlborough Public Schools deserve a shot of us trying to get this money and trying to have an outdated formula just revised and take into account the four core values that have been presented by the senator, so...
I agree with all of that.
Yeah, so...
Other questions from the committee?
Not really questioning, but I'll just put my two cents in. You know, the legislature funded the Foundation Budget Review Commission to do this study. And we know from that, from the findings, how much presumably it costs to adequately educate students. Then on top of it, we've got the charter school issue. Most importantly, the current funding formula doesn't factor in healthcare costs, which we know are taking over every industry. It's not just schools, you know, government agencies. And it doesn't factor in the added need for specialized services for EL students and special education students. So the whole premise that the funding formula we're currently dealing with is based on is flawed. And something has to give. And the only way to pressure the legislature to figure it out is by speaking up. And there are some lawsuits happening. I happen to be on the board of MASC and we just voted recently to sign on to one of those lawsuits. There's a lot of pressure to really figure it out. And so I am supportive of the PROMISE Act.
I think, you know, the backing of such a large organization like the Massachusetts Teachers Association will have some bearing on the movement of this. So, you know, again, it's a grassroots level thing. If many organizations come together, then we can force a change. And that is what's necessary.
Other questions from the committee? Tennessee?
I'd only echo, I think, to your point. Unfortunately, what we've seen in politics lately is unless there are a bunch of voices all moving forward together, we don't get a lot of motion, we don't get a lot of energy, and we don't have a lot of listening ears. And frankly, we need to have people listening. The students and our whole population needs to be better supported. There are continual mandates that continue to come down about making sure that our students are getting services. And you're right, and you know, we've had many discussions around the charter school issues, some of the issues about some of the regional school support and that funding. And as well, right here, we need to make a stance. And I think our voice needs to join with others so that hopefully it will allow for people to have a little bit more attention paid. And you're right, you know, it really does need a full redo. The likelihood of a full redo coming, bless you, the likelihood of a full redo coming anytime soon, very doubtful. So I'm going to go with, let's get going on something and roll up our sleeves together and try and make a stink about it so that people pay attention. So, thank you.
I just want to add one more thing. Precisely the reason why I think it's important to push forward this is because the governor's budget was so disappointing. I mean, it's very clear...
Well, it's very disappointing to us, but it worked very well in many communities. And even the senator said, "It covers a lot of the things that she's covering in her bill." Many of the things she's covering in her bill. And she actually did comparisons between the current formulas, the governor's and her bill, so... The only thing I don't, I don't want the public in Marlborough to think that our schools aren't properly funded, though. I don't think we're...
No, no, no.
We're, there's many communities out there that are having a real difficult time.
Absolutely.
And we've been very, very fortunate, both with the city support and from the support from the state. I mean, we've done very well with our Chapter 70 and our local aids.
I do want to say that that's not, you know, whenever I talk about the budget in Marlborough and our...
It's global.
It is. You know, and we are, the MEA is very appreciative of, you know, the fact that we don't have overrides, we don't have many issues that other communities have. But I think it's more of an equalization within towns. So it's, you know, the haves and the have-nots. And we are not a have-not, but compared to, you know, it levels the playing field for every student in Massachusetts.
Right. It shouldn't matter what ZIP code you live in, whether or not you get an adequate education. And it's not just adequate, a good education. Yeah.
Other questions and comments? Seeing none, there was a motion to support the resolution.
Was there?
There was.
I would like to make a motion.
Oh, well, actually, I made...
She doesn't get to make motions.
By the president of the MEA.
She's requesting a motion.
I moved to support the PROMISE Act.
Motion made and seconded to support the PROMISE Act. No further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
FY '20 calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As per our school committee policy, I am providing a draft calendar and want to open it up for comments. I believe that we have already made a mistake, so I'd like to own that. And especially in September, if, I'd like to apologize if we made a mistake and scheduled any meetings during any religious holidays. So if we need to change that, I am happy to take a look at this and try to...
Yeah, the October 8th meeting just needs to be moved, so just a week ahead or a week behind.
Right, and there's five weeks in that month, so we could do the 15th and the 29th instead.
Things are going to run so smooth, we don't need it.
Ever.
I'll be happy to make that adjustment. If anybody sees anything on the calendar that obviously looks like an error, if there's something in there, please, you know, let me know. And I can bring back another, I'm sorry, Denise.
No, I just have one question.
Yes.
In November...
Yes.
What was my question? I highlighted it.
It was in November.
The 5th? The 5th. What was November 5th?
Election Day. It's election day.
Oh, that's why there's professional development. I was going to see if you could make like a long weekend, but I guess you can't.
We could make it from the 5th to the 12th.
Can we do something about March? March looks depressing. That's a lot of school days.
March is always depressing. That's the depressing season, right?
All right, I have no comment.
So are there any other changes? Do you want to come back? Can we do this at the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Is that okay with the committee?
I think we usually adopt this, the first one in April, right? Is that about the timeframe?
By contract.
I was just going to say, the only comment is, I really think we need a little bit of a nod over here from MEA because we need to make sure we're meeting policy expectations. It normally is. I think as long as we had that first draft out...
I think the only date we're looking to change, though, is the school committee meetings.
Okay.
Right. None of the other... Do I have permission to use those kindergarten dates that are included in there for the registration dates to just communicate those dates?
So it's a pleasure. Do we wait till the next meeting?
We need to wait? I mean, if it's...
The kindergarten dates shouldn't change.
So are we doing kindergarten screening like we did this past year?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can make, you know, I can make a revised one and then bring it back for the next meeting for a vote. And that, it'll still be the first meeting in March.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Motion to table until the first meeting in March. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Azamit Valley Collaborative?
That is just the report that I've left at everyone's seat. Just wanted to, again, thank Kathy Cummins and all the first staff at ABC for providing such a great report to us.
Thank you very much. FY '19 budget transfers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few transfers for the committee to consider tonight. I'm going to be going through them just by building. On the first page at ECC, we're requesting $9,000 to be transferred to support overspend substitute and paraprofessional lines here at ECC. At JARWIC, we're requesting $2,700 to be transferred for utilizing savings and paraprofessional costs to offset instructional materials as well as office support overspending in certain accounts. On the second page at CAIN, we're requesting a transfer of $16,350. $6,000 is to support a long-term substitute and a reading specialist. $5,500 is to pay for the SCI retail course that we offer here in District. $2,100 is for retroactive payment in the health wellness account. And all remaining transfers are due to overages related to additional work by staff or overtime payments. Also, the second page over at RICHARD, $5,200. All of those transfers are related to overages due to additional work or OT payments. The third page at WITCOM, request for $2,200, also due to additional work and OT overages. At Marlborough High, we're requesting a transfer of $12,726. $5,000 is due to a long-term substitute in the EL para account. Also requesting funds from a unutilized advisor stipend to support, to continue supporting our Saturday School, that's $2,200. And the remaining transfers are due to additional work and overtime payments. Lastly, district-wide, we're requesting a transfer of $20,000, partially due to people's services dues and memberships, savings that we can utilize to offset some conferences and PD overages that we're expecting to end the year with. We're also utilizing some savings in district-wide salaries to offset overages in transportation, postage, and OT costs. Sorry, I did that really quickly. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Entertainer motion?
Motion to accept the transfers.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yep.
I have a question. On the CAIN, can you just clarify what cover retroactive payment in health wellness?
That was a payment that we should have done to an employee. It was a retroactive payment. So we found out that there were, I believe there was a disconnect in the steps, so we just corrected that and it caused an overage on that account.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Acceptance of gifts and donations. Life Touch National Studios, JARWIC School, $1,871.45.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Marlborough Junior Women's Club, RICHARD School, $2,000.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Mr. Tennessee?
I'll need to be abstaining from this vote as I'm a member of the...
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan.
I'll abstain as well.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Global Partners LP ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program, WITCOM School STEM, $500.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. I can take credit for that. Arthur Viggen, Marlborough High School. Anonymous, $400 to Marlborough High School.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept.
With gratitude to Anonymous.
All those in favor, opposed, carries. St. Cobain, WITCOM School Makerspace, $1,200.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Filet Buyback Program, CAIN School, $10.58.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Skybridge Americas Inc., RICHARD School, $27.70.
Every penny counts. Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor, opposed, carries. And Mass DESE History and Social Science Grant, $7,540.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Reports to subcommittees?
I have reviewed the warrant and will sign it.
You have reviewed the warrant and approved. Thank you very much.
Ourin's.
Is that a subcommittee?
Oh, that's true. Sorry. Members' forum, whatever. Sorry.
It's out of the way now. I'm going on here to look for a certain email that I received today. Any, any, any members want to be heard?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowden, hand it here.
So I just actually wanted to comment on the money that the junior women's had given for the sensory hallways. And I'm just wondering if you might be able to say something about what's going on, because it will be in all the elementarys.
How thankful we are. It's fantastic.
Yeah, it's amazing.
I plan on bringing, actually, you're kind of preempting, but one of the things that's really nice about it is that the RICHARD School Council has started their own newscast. And it's fantastic. So I plan on bringing that in front of you in April. And they just recently did a story about these sensory paths, and it's just fantastic. The kids walk you through it, how it's supposed to be used, why do we have these now? And then they interview teachers about them as well. So I couldn't be more thankful about how this has all rolled out. And now that we have some consistency along all the elementary, too. Mary, if you want to jump in, just, it's fantastic.
It's just, I think it's important to note, it's just one of the tools that RICHARD School is using. And you can see in an action, it's just so exciting.
Yeah. Well, and just knowing that one of the MEF grants that RICHARD got this year is for stations around the school. So they're really beefing up this social-emotional environment for students that I would really love to see in all the schools. And having the juniors be so generous to support it in all the elementary schools is great.
It's not CSO, though.
It's, no, CSO is the app that we use so you can watch what the students are doing.
CSO is the greatest invention ever.
Just, Michelle, on that, it is expanding to other schools and CSO.
No, I do know. I saw the big check at CAIN or somewhere.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to say, it's slowly working its way through.
That's great.
That's great.
So, and it's, it's fun, I will say. Go, go take a look at them. They're cool.
I just wanted, I received an email today. Mayor, FYI, the last day of foundation walls are scheduled to be poured today. The crane is scheduled to be on-site Thursday. Steel is being delivered on Monday, and the plan is to start setting the seal frame on Tuesday.
Woo-hoo.
Commissioner Cook, so we're moving right along.
It's real.
Okay, I have one more thing.
Yep.
I'd like to welcome our newest member.
We forgot to do that.
We did, so...
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Well, it, it was great last night to see different people from the community actually interested in what we do here, and, you know, hopefully we can get them all involved in something to do with the schools and, and the city in general, so thank them all.
Agreed, yeah.
Ms. Tennessee.
One other thing, this weekend, Singing in the Rain Junior is going to be happening at Whitcomb, the middle school, so Friday and Saturday nights at 7:00 and Sunday at 1:00. Please come and support these kids. They have been working really, really hard and would love you to be there to support them, so that's it.
Thank you. Any other members?
Yes.
I'm not a member.
Again?
Denise does.
It's Ryan.
I have something. I just wanted to encourage everybody to attend this Thursday's...
Oh, yes, of course.
To meet the two finalists for the principal of the new elementary school. They will be at Jarwick is hosting it. Doesn't mean the Jarwick principal's going anywhere. It's from 7:00 to 8:00, so come and meet the finalists and bring your questions.
Thank you very much. She's the Bergeron.
She got it all, yeah. Thank you.
Any other members?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose, carries. Thank you all very much.